All right, good morning everybody. There's some feedback, so we're taking care of that. All right, we want to call this meeting of the -- special meeting of the City Council, City of Kingman, Monday, March 11th, to order. I will turn it over to roll call with our Clerk, Annie Meredith.
Good morning. Mayor Watkins will be joining us, he has not joined us yet this morning. Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, Council Walker, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two items on the agenda today. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item A, we're going to -- I need a motion or entertain a motion to go into executive session for the city manager contract negotiation. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. I'm just going to read the item. The City Council may go into session -- executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1 to discuss and provide direction regarding contract negotiations and/or adoption of the contract for the new city manager, discussion and/or action. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go into executive session, we shall return.
All right, coming out of executive session, we do have a couple of items. I would like to, at this time, ask for any representation from KDP to come forth. State your name. And what I'm looking for as a counsel is we're looking for some update, whatever you're able to provide, and we'll go ahead and entertain that now.
Okay, I appreciate it. My name is Tom DeVore. I'm an attorney from Las Vegas. The law firm of Reed Rubin, Simon and Bogatz. We represent Mr. Lenhart, who's with me today. He's the manager of KDP Manager. He's also represented by an Arizona firm. But since I was Mr. Lenhart's lead counsel and worked closely with the city and the city's outside counsel, Mr. McGuire, on the negotiated end of the development agreement, I thought it'd be appropriate, and Bill thought it'd be appropriate for me to address the meeting and any questions you may have today. If you give me just a few minutes, we're happy to be able to stand here and address the counsel. We believe there's been a lot of information provided to the counsel by Mr. Bill Pleese, who is Mr. Lenhart's partner, that is not credible and almost, we believe, a lot of it is deliberate misinformation. So we'd like you to understand the current status of KDP Manager, who is the developer under the development agreement, and get that information to you. Mr. Lenhart, with partners other than Mr. Pleese, owns and controls upwards of 940 acres at the center of the Rancho Santa Fe project. He negotiated into other agreements for the acquisition of over 260 acres of additional land critical to the project, with local investor groups led, one led by Lee Bruno and the other by John McCormick. Bill's been integrally involved in the planning and promotion of Rancho Santa Fe project from the start and has personally spent countless hours and millions of dollars of his own money in the long process of bringing that project to fruition. Mr. Lenhart partnered with Mr. Pleese in the formation of KDP Manager, which became the developer entity under the agreement. Because Mr. Pleese, or Mr. Lenhart, was led to believe that Mr. Pleese had pertinent development knowledge and also, and more importantly, had the ability to raise the significant amount of capital that was required from the developer to actually do the project. I and my firm were hired by Mr. Lenhart as his counsel, with my main focus being the drafting and negotiation of the development agreement. And again, I worked with Mr. McGuire to do that. After months of work in close cooperation with the city and staff, that DA was finalized, approved by the city, and signed in 2022. After that, KDP Manager worked with city staff, consultants, and engineers on the plans for the necessary connector roadways, drainage improvements, and other improvements for the project, all with an eye towards satisfying the A dot requirements for the funding and construction of the freeway interchange for the project. Mr. Lenhart and I also cooperated diligently with city staff and its right-of-way consultants on the documentation for the granting of the necessary rights-of-way for the project, all of which is a requirement under the development agreement. We worked together with Mr. Bruno's and Mr. McCormick's counsel and my friend, the late Jeff Goldberg, on sorting out the many pages of right-of-way documents and grants that span a large area, the large area that comprises the project. We also worked with Mr. Pleese on obtaining the necessary funding to satisfy the developer's monetary obligations under the DA. After months, it became clear, due to Mr. Pleese's past bankruptcies and other financial issues, that he did not have the ability to actually obtain the funding required, which, again, was one of his main responsibilities to the KDP entity. Once that became apparent, Mr. Pleese decided to go on the attack. Soon after that, to my client's surprise, Mr. Pleese evidently began working behind the scenes to besmirch Mr. Lenhart's reputation and to attempt to remove him from his membership and management positions with KDP and related to the project. And when I say it was a surprise, it was a surprise to all of us because when I first saw an email stating that Mr. Pleese was taking over, my first response to Mr. Lenhart was to say, "It looks like, you know, you need to get over to Bill and tell him his email's been attacked because somebody's sending crazy messages." But sadly, that wasn't the case. In the fall of '22, Mr. Pleese proceeded to contact the city, making false allegations about- contact the city, making false allegations about Mr. Lenhart, and base his claims, claims that he alone controlled KDP and the city should thereafter communicate only with him and the, on the project. I believe he also provided attorney opinions and all sorts of things, all of which were baseless and based on facts that were, at a minimum, embellished by Mr. Pleas, if not made up from whole cloth. After a working relationship, having a working relationship with city manager, former city manager Foggan for a number of years, Mr. Foggan and city staff abruptly and without explanation stopped communicating with Mr. Lenhart. After discussing the right-of-way documents and certain errors in them that needed to be corrected with Mr. Foggan in late '22 and in the first week of '23, Mr. Lenhart received no further communication from anyone in the city until May of 2023. By the way, the errors in those right-of-way documents were first pointed out by Mr. Lenhart, and he offered to do any, everything that was necessary, notwithstanding the issues with Mr. Pleas, to get those documents corrected. During that time, Mr. Lenhart sent detailed messages to Mr. Foggan requesting information on the status of the project and the need to get the right-of-way documents corrected, and alerting him that Mr. Pleas may be making false claims about his authority and control of KDP Manager. He hears back nothing from Mr. Foggan until finally he copies city attorney Cooper on one of his messages. It is clear that Mr. Lenhart's messages were not shared by city staff or elected officials prior to that time. Mr. Pleas clearly had the ear of the former city manager and city staff, but to our knowledge has provided the city with no documentation as to his claimed authority and control over KDP Manager, and so that's because no such documents exist. Then, in September of '23, following Mr. Foggan's departure, Mr. Lenhart sent a detailed letter to the city attorney, staff, mayor and council, excuse me, clearly stating what he had been communicating to Mr. Foggan for months to no avail, and asking for copies of all previous communications concerning KDP from September '22 forward, any communication with Mr. Pleas and his associates, agents, advisors, attorneys, as well as any modifications to the development agreement, and any ongoing communications. He noted in that letter that any commitments made by Pleas for KDP or the properties owned by Mr. Lenhart's entities may exceed his authority and be subject to a refusal. He also asked that, to avoid the risk of disrupting the project further, he be included in any future project discussions and updates. The only response Mr. Lenhart received of that letter was a suggestion from city attorney Cooper that he file a public records request form. As you know, Mr. Pleas and Mr. Lenhart are currently parties to litigation regarding to KDP Manager, both in Nevada and Arizona. An arbitration proceeding in Nevada, Nevada case is ongoing, although Mr. Pleas has tried to disrupt that proceeding by failing to pay the arbitration fees that are his responsibility. Those fees have finally now been paid, and the arbitration can continue. While there's certainly the possibility that the litigation could be resolved by settlement at any time, the arbitration hearing is now set for April 1st, and hopefully we'll proceed quickly after that. And the hope is that we could have some decision on that arbitration, which would then be binding on the parties and approved by the court shortly thereafter, but it will be probably a month or two before we get to that conclusion. To conclude, Mr. Lenhart remains dedicated to the Rancho Santa Fe project. While the development agreement clearly requires some modification, we would suggest that we keep the document in place to avoid any additional delay once the city and KDP Manager, through its proper management, can, can continue working on the project. If the council determines that that is not possible, Mr. Lenhart represents that he is ready and willing to work with the city in the future to see the project to its fruition for the benefit of the city and all involved. Again, Mr. Lenhart is with me. We're both here to answer any and all questions you may have regarding any of this subject matter.
Thank you, Mr. DeVore. We have no questions from counsel. We, Mr. Lenhart, if you have anything to add, you're welcome to at this time. All right, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Counsel. My name is Jeff Barr. With me is Nick Jacobitz from KDP Manager. Now, Mr. Lenhart was at one time a manager of KDP Manager. He was removed as a manager, and that's the dispute that is currently being litigated before you. Well, why was he removed? Well, I'll tell you one of the reasons why he was removed. He is a convicted criminal. What was he convicted of? He was convicted of illegal campaign contributions, and I would like to enter into the record his conviction, the transcript of his conviction with your permission.
That's fine. You can give it to Mr. McGuire.
I have copies for the counsel.
Just give it to Mr. Cooper. We'll make sure that we get a copy. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Lenhart was convicted of one count, but he was investigated for a lot of other counts, and I would also like to enter into the record a copy, a copy of the prosecutor's report detailing the many, the many campaign contributions that he was convicted of, or, excuse me, I apologize, that he was investigated for. Now, KDP Manager is committed to finishing this project. We are committed to finalizing this litigation. Our timeline is going to be contemporaneous with ADOT's timeline. We intend to, as it stands right now, resolve the litigation, and when the interchange goes out the bid and begins construction, we hope to begin construction. Mr. Pleas has been removed as manager. I just want to reiterate that. You check with the records of the Secretary of State. There's no court order that points him back as manager, absolutely nothing. As far as everyone is concerned, except for Mr. Lenhart, Bill Pleas is the manager of KDP Manager. Now, I don't want the city council to get in the middle of this fight. I really don't. I will just leave, again, I will just leave you with this thought, and that is, whom do you trust? A person who stands here today and is committed to finalizing this development in the development agreement? Or a convicted criminal? A convicted criminal. Would that will answer any questions?
Thank you. We don't have any questions for you at this time, but thank you.
If I may just briefly respond.
I don't think we're going to do any back and forth. No, thank you. All right, at this time, I want to ask Mr. Garmin to come up, interim city engineer, my Carmen, sorry. I renamed you. Could you give us an update on the project and the timelines and kind of where we are, please?
Sure, Vice Mayor and Counsel. AECOM had their comment resolution meeting with ADOT on February 27th. There was a lot of little minor nitpicky comments that need to take care of. A lot of it had to do with the notes and the font on the notes and the drawings and that kind of thing. When I spoke with Dale Wiggins, who's their project manager, his indication was they plan to have the plans back to ADOT by the first week of April. That's pretty much all I got for right now.
All right, thank you. At this moment, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager and Finance Director Tina Moline, will you provide an update to us on the funding?
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Counsel. So, to date, our current cost estimates are about $43 million for the traffic interchange itself. We have received the $20 million from the state as their contribution to the interchange, and the city does have in cash reserves the difference when ADOT does demand those monies.
All right, thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Ms. Moline. All right, at this time, staff is directing, or council is directing staff to continue to move forward with the timeline and the final design for ADOT, so please continue forward with that. The city will be moving forward according to the contract timeline. We want to make sure that the citizens know that this is a priority for council. We are all unified as far as where we want to take this project, and that's to the end. We want to get those shovels in the ground, and we feel it's extremely important to our citizens and the e-commerce that we are about to have in our city. With that being said, we are going to ask staff that the first meeting, council meeting in June, if you will agendize this, to give us, have the KDP come back and give us an update. Hopefully, there's some resolution. We will have those discussions at that time when it's agendized. All right? With that, if council has no other direction, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
We have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.